Laconia, it is Tuesday, February 2nd, 2016. Time being 6:30, we can begin our published agenda. Please, let's see, the recording secretary will be Kalina Graham. And Kalina, would you do the roll call of the members at the table, please?
Mike Romani. I mean, Dela Bucky.
Here.
Edwin Born-Boles.
President.
Jay Tivman.
President.
Nick Downs.
Here.
Here.
Karen Ryan.
Don Richards.
Here.
Hamilton McLean.
Here.
And Chair Hutchins.
Sharon.
Chair Hutchins.
Oh, Chair, oh, okay.
Chair Hutchins.
And staff members with us this evening are the Planning Director, Shanna Saunders, and Assistant Director, Brandy Logan. Please, let's see, we have a quorum, and Mike, Bill Cantardo is in Florida. Being a regular member, we would like you to vote in his stead. Thank you. Let's see. If anyone in the audience is here for the application, application acceptance for 93 and 109 Weers Boulevard, it's near the end of our meeting, that one is just an acceptance. There's not going to be a discussion tonight, and so if anyone is here for that, we hate to have you wait all the way through it and realize there's nothing that's going to happen other than a formality of accepting it. Good. Our first thing will be a presentation by our Planning Director, Shanna Saunders, on the Plan New Hampshire Sharette update of our master plan.
Thank you. So I apologize, the screen I'm going to be talking to is back here, so for those of you in front of it, you may want to turn your seats around so you can see better.
Is this flag in your way, anybody's way? The flag? No?
More lights, or is that good? That's good. So I wanted to talk today about the sharette that the Reimagined Laconia process had back in August. It was a two-day sharette, happening over August 28th and 29th, 2015. We just received the report today for that, this week, for that project, so I wanted to present that to you, the planning board. So the sharette was done by a group called Plan New Hampshire. Plan New Hampshire is a nonprofit group with a mission to foster excellence in planning, design, and development. Their membership is made up of architects, landscape architects, engineers, planners, building and real estate professionals, lawyers, and financial and insurance firms, as well as others, and they pull from their members to provide volunteers for communities that apply for or granted their sharette process. And those volunteers are the ones who come to your community, take off a day of work on Friday, and then additionally spend Saturday with the community to help come up with the recommendations as part of the sharette. So what is a design sharette? A design sharette is a brief, intense brainstorming session where ideas are brought together collectively by the people for the purpose of defining potential planning and design recommendations. So it's a multi-step process. The first step is to identify the need or the question, the ask. The second thing is to collect information from the community itself. Then the sharette team, the professionals, the volunteers in this case, from Plan New Hampshire, try to understand more deeply and broadly what the situation is, and they analyze and evaluate what they've seen on the ground, what they see in maps and resources that we've brought, and what they've heard from the people, and they come up with recommendations based on that. So our sharette again was over Thursday and Friday afternoon in August. It actually started Thursday morning with what we called a meeting with the stakeholders, so a lot of you guys were probably involved with that, other decision-making individuals, business owners across the city. We had then open sessions in the afternoon and evening on Friday, and then on Saturday was a large open session at the mill where the sharette team really moved forward with ideas and sketched stuff out, and you'll see some pictures of that. So immediately, the Plan New Hampshire team ID'd four big challenges that the city faced. The first one is the economic push-pull of Bike Week and its effect on the Weers. The second one is the perceptions of downtown, the urban renewal kind of leftover, and what people think of downtown versus the reality. The third one is Lakeport and the fact that it's kind of sandwiched in between downtown and the Weers and doesn't have a really strong identity of its own. And then fourth is the fact that all of the amenities and villages, shopping areas, are geographically separate in Laconia, and in most cases, you need a car to travel between them, and I'll address that a little bit more as we go through. So in the open sessions, Plan New Hampshire kind of broke out what they were asking folks into two pieces. One is, what exists, and then, what do people want to see? So what exists? We heard about a tight housing market. We heard about a lot of rental properties. We heard about great schools, but changing demographics. The drug problem was brought up quite a bit, and the perception that this kind of brought to the city. Lack of public transportation, transitionic economy, new businesses coming to town which have added some new energy to the villages. The history of Laconia and how people value it. Canal Street and its kind of thriving art scene downtown. The small downtown feel, and I think I missed the, in there somewhere, about the natural resources in the lakes. So what do people want to see? More public water access, better public transit, better signage, including wayfinding signage, more businesses and apartments downtown, expanded WOW Trail, making Laconia a year-round destination, a better perception of Laconia, both internally, the residents and the people that live here, as well as externally, the people that come and visit and the other communities that surround us. A larger arts and entertainment scene, and then better care of local properties, and the need to attract young families and young professionals who stay here. So they started off their recommendations with a section in their report on connectivity. And they talk about kind of a weak transportation network around Laconia, and the fact that many of the residents, when asked if they visit the Weers or downtown, often say that they don't go there. They found in particular that the Weers in the summertime, the place that's probably most appealing to go to in the summer with all of its amenities, is the place that most residents said that they did not travel to. So they talked about, in their report, adopting a transportation strategy that supports not just vehicular traffic, but walking, cycling, and public transport. And they say, they talk about how this is going to affect not just the visitors as destination, but current residents, including the teens and the millennials, many of whom are choosing not to drive, as well as the seniors. It also, they also talk about those that work in the city, especially in the tourist-oriented businesses along Weers Boulevard, that they have other options from going to and from work other than getting in their car, that city businesses that depend on employees for service sector jobs, often working irregular hours, could have great, access to a greater labor force, and that it would be a more attractive place to young professionals and potential retirees and young families looking for cultural vitality and outdoor recreation. One of the images that's in the report that helped them talk about the wayfinding was this one, and this came from one of the volunteers that recently completed the Main Street Project in Concord and its updated wayfinding. And this shows, and I apologize, it's a little washed out, it shows all the different types of wayfinding signs that Concord looked at in determining which ones they would use downtown. I'm not sure that all of these were used, but there are many, many options for wayfinding signs. They talk about wayfinding in all three of the villages across Laconia, and I'll get into specifics, but I thought this was a very interesting image and one that we could pull ideas off of. So now I'm going to go through each of the villages. The first one they talked about was Weers Beach. So you can see here, the way that they presented these results was really by reiterating what they heard from the citizens. So there's a history in the Weers. They want a year-round destination. They want it to be attractive. They want it easier, want it to be easier to get around on foot. They want to use more of the land for a longer portion of the year, especially the large vacant lots. They don't want any recommendations that will discourage businesses from opening. They would like a boat ramp for local residents for access to Lake Winnie, Wipasaki, and the fact that Weers kind of needs a facelift. There are many empty lots and rundown-looking buildings. So that's what they heard from the public, from the public sessions and the stakeholders they talked to. Oh my gosh, this image is very washed out. I apologize. This is actually, on the right-hand side of this picture is a picture of the old Sanborn map of the Weers, and it basically speaks to the historical factor in the Weers, and the fact that many of the camps, motor courts, recreational buildings, arcades, the pier, the Weers Beach sign, and the boardwalk, which they thought was probably the only inland seaside resort-style boardwalk in the state, all go way back in history and really deserve some protection. They called them significant historic resources. They really thought there should be plans in place to preserve these structures, and some sort of maybe zoning overlay or form-based code to encourage continued construction that complements what already exists down there. So I apologize again for that image being very washed out. The other thing they talked about with the Weers is the walkability. So here's a picture of where Weers Boulevard intersects with Endicott East and North at what we formally refer to as Malfunction Junction, and now has the Rotary there. And these three circles are basically 10-minute walking nodes. So from the center of the circle to the edges is a 10-minute walk. And basically, what they said is, within these circles, it makes good economic sense to make walking and biking easy and pleasurable by improving sidewalks, adding bike lanes, and improving signage, so that the 10-minute walk does not become a 20-minute walk, so that the visitors and the residents really have an enjoyable experience when they come down to the Weers and are able to move around. So this, and now this image speaks also to the fact that, in most cases, visitors that come to the Weers have to get in their car to drive from wherever they are staying, their hotel motel, to the boardwalk, to the grocery store, to the restaurants. It's all car-dependent. And so they really talked about providing that alternate transportation, protected bike lanes, enhanced pedestrian connectivity, so that the tourists can get around when they're on vacation without having to worry about where to park or how to move their car and choking up the streets. They also provide some recommendations for some of the large vacant open lots that were in the Weers. This was one of the top concerns identified by the stakeholders. They said, given the attractiveness of Weers Beach, their first lot was a hotel. And so they outlined three locations they thought that might work. One is Lot 14, which is the, near Cumberland Farms, it's kind of the open, large open lot there. They thought a hotel would work perfectly there, and that it was very walkable to a lot of the amenities, very centrally located and walkable. Lot 8, which is the former volcano water slide, would also be a wonderful spot for a hotel, although they spoke about the first floor being storefront retail to take advantage of the lakeside AV, street frontage that it has. Then they talked about Lot 12, which is the former Carl's Restaurant, and the fact that that site really enjoys high-traffic visibility, and that that site would probably be better for a retail facility, but a low-intensity retail facility, something like a rental shop for motor scooters or bicycles, or a coffee shop, something like that. They recognized that the economy may not support a hotel, or mixed-use development, or a new retail establishment, so they did provide some temporary options for some of those parcels as well. The first one is kind of a temporary-type canopy, large-scale temporary canopy, which could accommodate some, both summer and winter activities. Summer activities like boat shows and car shows, but winter activities like perhaps an ice rink, if we were able to flood it and freeze it, or maybe even a parking spot for snowmobiles. One of the ideas I thought was really interesting that they proposed, and I am not familiar with, but they presented, is happening in Franklin. I guess Franklin is installing one of these, is a solar power array, and in Franklin, it's going to power about 1,000 homes, where you can have it, give it some height, and then park cars under it. So it's kind of a car park, a shaded car park type of area. It also could house a farmer's market or a flea market under it and provide some shade to summertime activity. This would then provide the business owners with some income on that property as well. Moving on to the downtown. So in the downtown, folks told the sharette team that there was a perception of kind of ill, drugs and homelessness and safety issues, that residents want more things to do downtown, more businesses and shops, especially locally owned, that more quality housing is needed. They want to see the downtown play off its history and architecture. They want to make it easier for people to walk around downtown and provide safe pedestrian crossings. They want downtown to have a small, thriving art scene. They recognize the colonials being very important, and they wanted more recreation and nightlife options in downtown. I provided a quote here from the report. This comes directly from the Plan New Hampshire people. I thought it was worth reading. "Laconia has one of the great urban downtowns in New Hampshire, with stunning historical buildings that are open to the public. The train station, the public library, and the Bellknot Mill are all within easy-walking distance of one another." So they really thought our downtown was really quite amazing, and I think that's really something to build off of. The way that they looked at downtown was they kind of broke it up into Beacon Street East recommendations and Beacon Street West recommendations. For Beacon Street West, they really pointed out that the Bank of New Hampshire property really has one of, a wonderful opportunity to add to the overall look and feel of Beacon Street West, where they may add some green space, and some plantings, and some lighting that would really make the entrance to Beacon West look very, very nice. And they also talked about potential build-out once, you know, in the future, once the bank decides to rebuild. They talked about the Veteran's Square area, and again, providing some green space and bump-out areas. And what this does is it basically narrows the roadway at the point of the pedestrian crossing to allow the pedestrian crossing to be very, very short, and so that people feel much safer when they're crossing the street and they don't have to cross huge expanses of crosswalk. That crosswalk across this area, Veteran's Square, is very, very long, and for folks that have low mobility, it's a very scary crossing to get through several lanes of traffic, what, four or five lanes of traffic in that one crossing, without a cross signal or anything like that, a crossing signal. And then on Beacon Street West, a lot of the same stuff, making those pedestrian crossings as short as possible, adding some green space, some bump-outs, bringing the lighting fixtures down to a pedestrian scale. As you can see here, the big white gooseneck light is almost a highway-scale light. It's not a light fixture that you would see on a roadway where the speed limit is probably 25 miles an hour or so. And what they did say with most of these in downtown is that these elements are things that could be put, painted in temporarily with cones and things like that, so that the city could actually try them before we actually invested in them. And the Reimagined Laconia process has talked about doing that in some of our road labs. We did have a road lab on Weers Boulevard, and then we got snowed out from bringing the road lab to downtown, but we will be bringing that back to downtown, especially since I understand today, the Groundhog, is it the Groundhog that tells you? Yeah. Sounds like we've got spring coming quickly, so hopefully we'll be able to do those road labs fairly shortly. So moving on to Lakeport. The citizens in Lakeport told the sharette team that in Lakeport, businesses often suffer from lack of adequate parking, that the Union and Elm intersection is not pedestrian-friendly, there needs to be more opportunities for connection to the waterfront, that Lakeport is centrally located but often overlooked, and that people remember Lakeport as a thriving village center. And this quote, I won't read it, but it basically speaks to the fact that there has been a lot of work in Lakeport, that Lakeport kind of felt left behind since the 2017 EPA report, but there certainly has been some work done as we move forward in Lakeport. So their recommendations for Lakeport. Number one was the parking issue. In their opinion, Lakeport doesn't have a parking problem, and they thought that there was a significant amount of what they call parkable area in Lakeport, near Fratello's and the Opechian, but that the issue was distilled down to whose parking it was, and how accessible that parking was to the area businesses. And so they talked about that the sea of asphalt with very limited wayfinding, often gave a sense of confusion to people trying to navigate that area. They also talked about the intersection of Union and Elm Street, and the possibility of making that much more pedestrian-friendly. So they talked about signage and theming that supports the idea that Lakeport is a place to come for a nice meal, a bike ride, and for a picnic by Lake Opechian, and to visit the Freight House Museum. And they talked about rebranding it Lakeport Junction. So here are the recommendations they had for Lakeport. Develop a collaborative parking plan, which would allow businesses to share parking as an asset to the community, and include in that a signage program that informs visitors of parking options. Provide pedestrian-centered intersections at what they called the junction, so the intersection of Union AV and Elm Street. Visually significant control to connect all four corners easily and provide safe launching points at intersections through curb cuts. Enhance traffic flow by removing off-street parking on the east side of Union AV and providing for left-turn queuing onto Elm Street. Enhance the bicycle access to the neighborhoods, and improve the pedestrian bridge off of Gold Street to create a spur off the WOW Trail. Promote commercial development on the east corner of the WOW Trail and Elm, configured to channel access to Lake Opechian. Now, they also said, contrary to the EPA report, where they talked about taking down the Lakeport Fire Station and turning that into a park, they thought it should be preserved because it was a great example of mid-century modern architecture, and that was something that came out right away. However, they did talk that streetscape enhancements, as were talked about in the EPA, 2000 EPA report, should be completed. They also wanted to talk a little bit about Union AV. They basically pointed out that roads like Union AV seldom loved by anyone in the community, but the businesses that they are home to are a very important part of the tax base. And they also serve for a home for many important, long-established businesses. And so, again, I apologize for the quality of this image, but they talked about basically providing a streetscape that accommodated both cars, bicycles, and pedestrians, and gave a sense of safety, and that the, you know, the city could adopt basically a program of putting in roads like this wherever they do road upgrades. Now, I know on Union AV, the city has been trying to do that. When they redo Union AV, they have been trying to put in that sub-lawn with vegetation and upgrade the sidewalks. So that's something that we certainly should continue. Lastly, they talk about the leadership and economics. They were impressed with the progresses that had been made over the years. It was really great for them to be able to see the progression of master plans, and then the EPA report, and then what has happened on the ground. And they think we're doing a great job in getting stuff done. They talked about, let's see, continuing the pattern of wise capital improvements, such as the Gateway Park, and investing on projects that improve transportation options and the connectivity of the different parts of the city. And again, they speak to the EPA report and many of the other reports that have been done that provide really strong recommendations. So with that, I just want to wrap up by saying a thank you to the Plan New Hampshire team. It's set of volunteers. Typically, Plan New Hampshire sends three to four volunteers for a sharette. You can see we had very many more. It was fantastic to see such a well-rounded group. And I also wanted to thank all the citizens of Laconia that made this event such a success, because without all of their input, we certainly wouldn't have had all, as much input in all these great ideas. So with that, I can take any questions that you guys may have.
Your plan is to present this around the city to different groups?
Yes.
And so the public can come and hear it?
Yes, thank you, thank you. So we plan to take this presentation on the road. We have already been in touch with many of the citizens groups, the Rotary, the Chamber, to be able to present to their boards and commissions, a lot of the same groups that we presented the Reimagined Process to the first time, and continue to get input from this report. The input from those presentations, the report itself, plus all the input we've received already from the Reimagined Laconia process, will all go into helping us put together the land use chapter of the master plan.
That was going to be my question.
Can you hit the lights?
Yeah, that's my, that's my real question.
Yeah.
Is how we're going to incorporate this?
In the master plan.
Or what phases into the master plan, and what the timeframe is for that?
Yeah. So this specific piece of the Reimagined Laconia was to help us kind of set the groundwork for the land use chapter of the master plan. We're also working on the transportation chapter, the natural resources chapter, and the economics chapter. Our plan is to host an event, probably the beginning of the summer, midsummer perhaps, where we bring drafts of those chapters out to the public. And each one of those chapters is based on what we've been hearing. So we've got the sharette, we've got the New Hampshire Listen Session we had at the Bellknot Mill, we had the poster session at the Opechian, we've had our parking days where we got out in the community. We've met with the Bellknap County Economic Development Group. We've met with the Chamber, we've met with the Rotary, we've met with the Main Street Initiative, we've met with Weers Action. All of that input has been taken into account when we're drafting these reports. So our plan is now, with these drafted reports, to go back out to the public and say, look, this is what we've heard from you. Did we get it right? And are we on the right track with these recommendations? And be able to get some input on, from folks out in the community before we finalize those chapters and move on to the chapters we haven't started yet, which include housing, community facilities and services, and cultural and historic resources.
When do you plan to start those?
Probably not until the fall, because we want to really get these heavy, well, not that I shouldn't say the fall. We'll probably start on them after, after the large session in the early spring and summer. So late summer, fall, we'll start on those.
And I'll ask, as a city council member, when are you going to come before the city council and brief all of us as to where we're at?
So my hope was to kind of trial this before my very friendly planning board, and then next, come to the city council, who I know are going to be just as friendly.
I'm very friendly.
I know you are. I know you are.
Now, your intent is to pass out copies of what you presented tonight?
I do have copies, yep.
And the homework?
And this is on our website.
Pardon me?
Yep, and we kind of made the announcement to everyone on our Reimagined Laconia email list and Facebook page, that this was out. It's been up on our website, so hopefully everyone has kind of seen it by now.
Where do these drawings that are on the front of the building?
Yes.
Where do they fit in?
The posters that are down front?
Of proposed possible changes to these various locations? They're in the?
Yeah, in the windows. Yeah. So all of that came from the sharette. So most of those came right from this report.
All right.
Yep, yep. And in fact, a lot of those are just draft form. Now that we've got this presentation done, we'll pull from the presentation and update those posters on the final sets of maps, and keep those up for a little while longer. I must say too, I can't tell you how many times I've walked out and seen people looking at those. It's a great opportunity for the public to come and take a look at those posters. They can take their time. I know it's been a little bit cold to stand out there over the winter, but we'll make sure that those stay up through the spring, so you can come and take a look. And then always, you know, come reach out to the planning office and email the Reimagined Laconia website, you know, and ask us any questions you may have.
We do have a subcommittee working on this, but I'd just like to reiterate, this is a responsibility of this group right here, this table. It's not something that we can say to the city council, hey, you guys write it. It's not their responsibility, it's our responsibility. And so, taking these, as these documents come together like this, and in the quiet of your study, just going over them, and then, please, get back to Shanna or Brandy about things you don't understand, things that could be phrased differently, things that you think might be missing, so that we all, we're all in this together, and at the end, each one of us needs to sign the darn thing. And so it is our responsibility, and we appreciate your help a lot.
Super.
Next on our agenda is, any questions to, about this at this time? Extensions? We have none. There is a continued public hearing. It's application PL 2015-0138 SP, 153 Church Street. It's a proposal to demolish a vacant building and add landscaping to its place. This is the building on the junction that's called Busy Corners. It has been moving through the process. It's been to the Historic Commission, and they have reported back on it. And for our purpose here, it's just being continued to barge first because it is a, for them, a complicated issue. The CVS did close on the property, so they did acquire the property from the former owner. And so that's, that's very important.
Can I just add one quick thing to that? The city has signed off on the demolition permit, which does not go through this board. The Heritage Commission did sign off on it because it's an older building.
The Heritage Commission did sign off on it because it's a, an older building. They basically said it's not a significant building, so it's not one that they wanted to have a public hearing on. They did ask for the Busy Corners sign. There was also kind of an odd and unique granite step into the building, so they asked that that be preserved with the thought process that there'd be some sort of memorial placed using that step in the, in the future park. So, it very well may be that the next time we meet when we're talking about the park, which you guys do see under the site plan process, that the building will have been demoed by then. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Super. Any questions about this? We'll see it again here in, next month. Now, on public hearings, we'll move on to that application, PL 2015-0134 SP, 95 Centurion Avenue, MBL 139-37-48. It's a proposal to change the approval use of a building. We've already approved the site plan and approved it as a building for retail, storage, and food service to that of a hotel. The application was accepted last month, and I will now open the public hearing at 7:01. Shanna, did you want to say anything before the application presents, or do you want to just wait until?
No.
A normal order?
Yep.
Okay, the applicant is here. Would you like to talk with us about this? Don't be nervous, but you're on television.
Hi, my name's Kurt Maye, representing Aqua Marina, Aqua Club LLC. We're here tonight, the proposed Phase Four of the Marina to construct it and the relatively, change it from what was a proposed retail space, some storage, and some food service area, convert that interior space to eight hotel units, and then a club area in the basement that'll be primarily a locker room and some like gym-type space for the members. So, the change of footprint and change of the overall cosmetics of the building and everything's staying very true to the initial, the original intent of it. So, from a public perspective, there's really no change other than, in my personal opinion, eight units will be less of an impact on like the traffic flow of the area and stuff like that. Our parking calculations and everything are in line, they're actually more in line with what they were originally proposed as. And if you'd like, I can kind of walk you through the area we're talking about. It's going to be a little bit even more washed out.
Beneath those.
See if I can fix that.
Do you guys need a light on? Or do you want it off?
Off.
I may be able to make it show up a little better. Hold, bear with me. Just a second. Well, you guys have the plans in front of you, so if you can follow along up there, you can probably see a little bit better on your plans, but from here over has been constructed. I think most of you are probably familiar with the established club and the beach bar and the volleyball area and everything that we've built there. You know, we welcome a lot of the public. It's a public area to go into the beach bar and everything, so we've had, I think it's a tremendous resource for the Lakes region, really. And this is the space right here that we're currently talking about. So, there's an existing brick pump house that's right here that I think most of you folks are probably familiar with. That's where it is in relation to this building. And this is the end of the current cabana. So, you can see how we're going to build this L-shaped building that ties the two together. And then this section here is part of the entire construction that is not going to be constructed this next coming construction season. So, the intent is to build this, build all the infrastructure, get the site completely built in Phase, what we call Phase Five, will be pad-ready for construction of that building. So, this building here, there's some additional drainage infrastructure that needs to be installed. Most of it's actually already installed, but the tie-in that ties the public drainage system from Centenary Ave, we're going to reroute it. Right now, it goes across here and onto the beach. It's a, it's a tremendous erosion problem, actually. So, what's going to happen is we're going to discontinue that pipe and we're going to tie in your system into our new system. It's going to go over here, it's going to enter, and there's a level lip spreader and everything that's established and vegetated. So, it's going to be an upgrade to the city's drainage system when we get that installed. The same goes for the water lines. We're going to be all the way back here, and we're going to be installing new water lines all the way up Centenary Ave to here, be doing some other capping and infrastructure to make some corrections to the water line that exists down there. It's pretty straightforward on the interior of the building. It's eight hotel suites. They're going to be very, very nicely constructed and finished. They range from one, two, and three-bedroom units. So, they're kind of like, you're probably familiar with like a Hilton Garden Suite-type thing where there's a kitchenette, like a galley kitchen. There will not be a stove in it, but there'll be a sink, a refrigerator, a dishwasher, and there'll be a little sitting area, kind of like a breakfast nook. And they'll all be done in that Adirondack-type finish, which will be very attractive, I think. And we're going to bring in new people, so these won't be the same people every single weekend. It'll be turning over, which will hopefully help out local, you know, businesses, bringing more people to the Weirs that are staying here. So, you know, it's all good things, I suppose.
How many units will there be?
There'll be eight units. So, it's, it's really not very big. It's just a boutique hotel, if you will.
Is there a limit on height there?
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet max?
For commercial uses?
Above grade?
Uh, average.
Average?
Mm-hmm. Across the...
We'll be closer to thirty-five feet in this section. You guys have any other questions or...
Where does, where will the, the new drainage, you're tying the city drainage into your private drainage, where will that exit? Where does it, where does it empty into?
Right now, it empties onto the beach.
Right.
And what's going to happen is we're going to discontinue that. It's going to proceed in eighteen-inch HDPE until it hits a thirty-six-inch HDPE that we installed a number of years ago for the railroad. It exits kind of, it's kind of cut off on this plan. It enters a level lip spreader and a couple spillways before it enters the lake over beyond the docks, kind of in the woods. It's a, it's a well-vegetated area, but that was in need of serious repair. That used to be a channel there that would erode and knock out the railroad tracks several times. So, this right here was a tremendous upgrade, this thirty-six-inch pipe.
Will the avenue be able to remain open during this construction of putting the storm water and the water main in?
When we construct, reconstruct Centenary Ave, because it does shift a little bit, the whole street. In talking to Luke over at DPW, our intention is to actually create a temporary bypass onto our property over here to facilitate construction in that area, these water lines and drainage and stuff like that. So, the idea is to get all, anything that's going to impact the street done as much as possible before May fifteenth.
Of this year?
Of this year. And then depending on, there's tremendous amounts of coordination for such a tiny little site that has to take place between the water, drainage, and electrical because all the telephone poles, which I think will be a really nice addition to that little gateway that goes down into, into Centenary and the Methodist there's, all those telephone poles go underground. So, starting back at our nearest butter back in this area, we're going to remove, I think it's three or four telephone poles and put all the electrical infrastructure underground.
And Luke is satisfied with that street plan?
Who's doing the engineering? Is this a city council? Because these plans aren't stamped and there's no engineer's name. There's a lot of underground stuff going on.
Yeah, who was it that did the engineering?
Nobis Engineering did the original stuff.
Correct.
All the underground, everything.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot changing. Wouldn't an engineer have to review a wise plan?
No, so, all of that infrastructure was all pre-approved under the Nobis plan. The only thing that's changing is the footprint of the building and then, and then basically some of the ties up.
Well, he's winding the road. He's, and that's in the original plan?
Yep, yep. The water, the sewer. There's a couple of little relocations and tie-ins from the main, be different, you know, because it's going to go into the building in a different location, but all the, that's all original part of the Nobis plan, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to talk about parking and loading real quick?
Sure. Yeah, that was a great comment that came up during the TRC One meeting, actually. So, during the original scope of the development, and sorry if I confused you there, Jerry, the, all the infrastructure and everything's part of the original.
It sounded like a lot of changes were going on and I couldn't tell.
No. Like, I was just kind of refreshing you guys because I think it's been a while. The real, only big change is the interior of the building and then a couple of great observations like the one I'm about to talk about. So, this cul-de-sac here was originally the loading and unloading for the Marina, really. And through, you know, years of just observation and then, you know, the hotel lobby's going to be right here, so it was a great point to create some quick fifteen-minute loading zone-type things. So, we're going to add a hotel loading zone and a Marina loading zone. So, we'll put some signage there that says like fifteen-minute loading. So, what happens a lot of times is the boaters come up on a Friday and the dad drives up and they unload all the stuff. We have carts there for them to use on the docks. They load everything into the cart and then, you know, the dad goes and finds a parking spot or, you know, however that works out. But, so, we added these two parking spots right here on the boat ramp, so there's no change to any layouts or anything. We're just going to stripe it a little bit differently, adding those two defined spots.
So, Kurt, you're pretty much finishing all the utilities, pretty much.
Yes.
So, you'll be looking pretty good.
All the site work.
Did the railroad ever do everything? That's all done, the crossing and everything? That's all? It's been a while since they walked up the hill.
The railroad crossing, I mean, that's another good point, actually. So, if you're familiar with the way that you go over that railroad, right now, it has a very bad angle on it. So, if you're in any kind of low car, you're going to bottom out. When we're done this, so we go in and we do all our infrastructure work, and then the railroad's going to come in and they're going to redo the, the stuff underneath the actual intersection.
There's a letter from 2006 where they were doing a bunch of stuff. That's all going to happen?
Yep. So, that, that whole thing's, the curse is going to be taken off of it. The street on the lake side of the tracks is going to be lifted up a little bit.
Okay.
So, it's going to help out a guy in his Corvette, I guess.
Yep.
So, just to, just to follow up on the parking, so, the project originally got a CUP for the parking, the off-site parking lot across the street. So, that's where all the parking is for the cabanas, the Marina, the restaurant, the hotel. So, that's why the loading zone's on this side, and then people will go park the car across the street in the large parking lot, which will also be finished, final paved, striped as part of this as well.
Oh, that's part of it too?
Yep, yep. So, the intention here of what we call Phase Four, I know it's not Phase, is all the infrastructure, everything's going to be complete. And Phase Five is going to be just pad-ready. We're going to have the utilities going right up to it. As much of everything we can possibly think of, site-work-wise, will be complete.
The pump house, are you covering it with the siding that you're using on the hotel so you won't even know it's there?
Nope, we're going to, the, the original, original plan had us siding that in stone, but we think that the brick really looks nice. We actually had it re-pointed, so it's going to stay the brick.
Well, it is, okay.
On the interior and the exterior, because I don't know if you're familiar with that structure, it's, it's true double-thick brick, so...
What are you going to do with Phase Five? Because I don't know. Do you know?
Well, I mean, we, we, so far, nothing's changed. That'll still be a restaurant. I'm not going to say that we're not going to come back and possibly ask for the same thing we're doing right now to change that potentially. It just hasn't, I don't want to close the door on the restaurant just yet.
Excellent. If there are any other questions, staff, would you like to make? Brandy?
So, as Kurt explained to you guys, this project was originally approved back in
Originally, it was approved back in 2003. It then expired and was re-approved in eight or nine, 2008 or nine, something like that.
I think it was, yeah, eight.
And so, this building was part of that original approval. So, the building as it stands with a retail and food service use is approved, and they could go right ahead and do that right now. But, they have come in to us because they want to change that internal use. And then there is, I think, a small change to the footprint.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty minimal.
Just a very small, they filled in a little bit of a jog.
A couple hundred square feet.
Yeah. So, it's, it's just that internal use change. The parking doesn't change. They are going to be doing upgrades to the drainage and water line as originally proposed as part of this phase. Just a couple of things that we would note if you're looking at the plan revision list. Most of those are technical revisions having to do with the sewer lines and water lines, things like that. The only other not-related things are that if the lighting plan changes from what was originally proposed, which we anticipate it likely will because the use is changing, they'll have to come back to us and meet with us and just, we'll make sure that that meets the lighting regulations.
That's just a staff review. It doesn't have to come before the board.
Okay.
I have a question for the, for the planning department. The plan revisions refer to you can't have full kitchens.
Correct.
Is that part of our ordinance or is that, does that come from someplace else?
So, we don't well define a unit. In speaking with our legal counsel, though, the way that we have defined what we call a separate unit, residential unit, is a kitchen. And in order to differentiate between a wet bar, which we see often, which includes a sink, a dishwasher, and a fridge, most oftentimes, which is often in a basement, in a rec room, or maybe over a garage, from a full kitchen, we, we call a, a full kitchen includes a stove. So, that's why we made it the requirement that these cannot have stove so that they are not full residential units, they're actually hotel units.
I guess I, I'm not complaining about it, but I don't understand the logic of it in some ways in terms of what we're doing, so maybe we can just take a look at that at some future time and figure out why we're doing that way.
Yep, I can go into, yeah, let's, let's do it a different time, yes.
I don't want to do it now.
Yep, that's perfectly fine, yep.
Because you're okay with not having a stove in there, right?
Yeah, it's probably for the best. It's probably for the best.
Okay.
Do you have 2F in your possession?
Do I have what?
2F, Plan Revision 2F.
Yes, I do.
Okay. And all these B, C, D, is that happening on this or is that happening on Nobis's plans that's stamped, that say Nobis? What are you allowing? What are you expecting?
Um...
When you're asking for plan revisions, are you going back to the original set of plans or are you going with this?
I don't know. I think that would be a question we would ask to the Water Department and the DPW Department. I can imagine that the Water Department would, they would probably go back to the Nobis plans because it's a public water system and they're very strict about that. Public Works is much more comfortable with doing field changes, so they may be okay with a marked-up, basically, field plan, basically. All of this...
I'm just not sure what you used to see and it's just...
All of this will be captured in Aspilts, which will be recorded.
Seeing none other questions, is, are there any butters in attendance that would like to address the board on this application? Any other taxpayers of the city of Laconia that would like to address the board on this issue? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing at twenty minutes past seven.
No changes to the dates.
I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional approval for PL 2015-0134 SP.
Second. You want to give the dates?
Project completion dates, planned March 1, 2016. Site improvement, April 5, 2016. Mylar, April 5, 2016, and completion, February 7, 2017. Plan revisions, A through F. Conditions that must be done prior to final approval, A through G. Conditions to be completed prior to start of work, A through B. Conditions applicable during and after construction, A through H.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, then I'll call the motion. All those in favor, raise their right hand. Any dissenting? Seeing none, I'll call the motion unanimous. Thank you very, very much. And thank you. We'll be anxious to see the construction.
You hesitated, so I thought you were taking the cheap way out.
No, I was looking for the, looking for the next thing to say.
Okay, the next application is application PL 2016-0005 SP Amendment, 72 Landing Lane, It's Laconia Mill Works. And this is, well, Shannon, why don't you explain this?
Yep, so the first thing I want to explain is that I do not believe there's a representative of the applicant here. Is that correct? Okay. They tried valiantly to get someone here. They were unable to. They wanted us to proceed with it if we could without them, but said that they could certainly come to another meeting if there were questions. From what I understand, Schinberg has other projects in other towns and they were at several planning and ZBA meetings tonight, like four or five of them across the state. So, they did not have somebody to come to this.
Can, can we stop there and accept the application, then?
Yes.
That's why they're not here. We want to have that. I would like to ask for a motion to accept the application. As the staff?
Yes.
It is complete. Then I'd like a motion to accept the application.
So moved.
Second? Any discussions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is, the application is accepted, then. And I will open the public hearing at 7:23. Now, as Shannon explained, the applicant is not here, but would you represent their interest, please?
Sure. So, this was approved way back in, oh, gosh, I should know that, 011, maybe. This is for Building Three, which is the rehab of the existing building off of Beacon West. They're finish, and I should say, and Building One, which is the building over the river, over the canal. They are moving toward certificates of occupancy for Building Three. They have temporary certificates of occupancy right now. They're moving toward full certificates of occupancy, which is at the time that we assess the impact fee and collect it. And as I started to look at what they were, what they needed to pay us for the impact fee, it occurred to me that they had never asked for the waiver that's allowed in the ordinance for, let me read it. The planning board may waive up to 80% of the impact fee for a property assessed with an impact fee if, after review of the project proposal, the planning board decides that the project is 100% infill, rehab, and reuse. There was no doubt that this project of Building Three was infill, rehab, and reuse. The reason this was put into impact fee ordinance was to encourage the rehab and reuse of vacant properties. And so, I just checked with them to make sure that that was the case and they said, whoops, they had completely forgotten it the first time around, that they had intended to ask for that waiver. So, we let them know that they need to come back for an amendment to their site plan to ask for that waiver. So, that's simply what it is tonight, is them asking for that infill, rehab, and reuse waiver to get the 80% reduction on their impact fees.
Thank you. Are there any abutters that would like to address the board on this issue, on this application? Seeing none, are there any other taxpayers in Laconia that would like to address the board on this application? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing at 7:25. Is there, then, any clarifying discussion you'd like to have before a motion is made?
Yeah, I want to know what they're saving.
Yes, I can tell you that. So, this is considered a multifamily building, three or more units. So, for each unit, it is an impact fee of $1,700. So, it would be 20% of that that they would pay. And I'm not so good at math, so.
How many units?
How many units in that building?
Twenty-three.
I do not remember.
10% is 770, so 20% is 340.
There we go. I should have been able to figure that out. I can see if I can look it up real quick.
Can we do another percentage? I mean, I'm not.
We cannot.
I'm not crazy about waiving impact fees.
So, there are two waivers that are allowed under the ordinance. The first one is 60% waiver for low and moderate income properties. And then the infill, rehab, and reuse, which is 80%.
And how long has that been in effect? Since the beginning?
Since 2011.
Which is the beginning, right?
Yeah, I think it was just before your term.
Because we wanted the infill. We didn't want the infill buildings.
Yeah.
And this regulation had to be approved by the City Council.
We don't want to waive impact fees besides this, infill, because.
I, I, I guess I understand the rationale, but.
It hurts.
But not only does it hurt, but, you know, this construction got, he did a lot with the federal government and got a lot of federal funding with respect to some of the things that he was doing down there.
Smart guy.
Smart guy. I'm not saying he's not a smart guy. I'm saying I'm like.
He also had a lot of environmental contamination that he had to deal with.
Yeah, a lot.
So, and although he got.
Which is still sort of ongoing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he did get funding for that, but, but there was a large time factor behind that, too, which is money.
So, we're going to waive 80% of it, not 20%?
Correct. He would pay 20, yep.
He would get 20.
I would certainly recommend this. I think with all of the aging infrastructure we have around the city, in order to encourage development interior of our urban areas and not keep pushing it to the edges, to the edges, to the edges with, with more green space development, I think waiving of the impact fee is the least we can do. And it will bring investments into the city. I mean, this project is bringing people to the downtown who now shop and drink coffee and go out to dinner in the downtown. It's, it obviously brings up a blighted old building, which brings up property values all around it as well.
When did the, when did this project start?
Before I came here in 2004.
The original Long Water Street you're talking about?
Okay. Because if you're right, the impact fees didn't come in until 2011.
That's correct. So, he came in with the entire site.
I know.
In, what, 2001 or '02?
Yeah. I don't know when.
He then came and amended the plan to include Building Three in 2000, it must have been 2011 because he is subject to the impact fees.
Because they had other plans for that building.
That's right.
Retail and so on and so forth that didn't, that didn't work out. And they had to get rid of that generator.
That was, that was just 2014, I think, actually.
Oh, right. I was going to say after, I should have said after 2011, yeah.
That building was originally scheduled to be a condominium and he changed it over to an apartment, right?
Correct, correct. I think so. I think it had some retail component to it.
It was going to be. The downstairs was going to be retail and, and the portion that came out over the river was going to be retail.
And then there was a restaurant piece to it.
It was going to be a restaurant.
Hasn't, hasn't he abandoned or the building that fell down over the river?
So, I know that there's discussion about possibly not moving forward with Building One. They've lost their grandfathering for DS permits. It is, it is directly right over the canal, so there are structural thoughts that need to be taken into consideration to build a building not only on the riverbank but over a canal. So, I know that he's contemplating not building that building.
Where does that canal go to?
It empties out up, there's a tiny little, I think it's an insurance company building on the end, behind Benny Media, on the end of the City Hall parking lot. It actually starts up there.
Behind the spa.
Yeah, behind the spa and then ends.
It goes right under downtown.
Underneath the city, yep.
And exits into the river.
Yep, if you look on the zoning map, there's a, there's actually a red dotted line that outlines how it, how it kind of curves through underneath downtown.
There was a turbine generator there. And that's what made that spot so difficult to, to build anything because of the structure that was there before.
I'd like some more history on this and I'd like to hear from the applicant. I mean, that's how, you know, an 80% waiver and from an ordinance dating back to 2011, I don't know when he did his proposal and what it was. I don't want to be stubborn and mean and I want to encourage people to come into the downtown and develop everything. But I would like to have more information other than he qualifies and we recommend it. I'd like to know when he, when he applied, how he changed it, what was going on.
Okay.
Because an 80% impact fee makes a difference to the City of Laconia and we should be looking at that carefully.
If someone comes in tomorrow, pick a building.
The one right across the street here.
Someone comes in tomorrow across the street, they're going to get an 80% reduction in the impact fee.
Well, they're going to get a 60% reduction, right?
No, the undeveloped building right next to Stewart Park.
The undeveloped one.
They're going to get 80%.
Okay.
And they come in tomorrow with a brand-new application.
Right.
So, what's the difference? You want to change it, you got to go back and change the whole thing.
Yeah, this is the deal that was made, the agreement.
I just don't have enough history on this deal. Somebody comes in tomorrow.
They're going to get it.
And they're, they're going to get it.
They're going to get it.
Okay, so I don't have enough history on this because they're not coming in tomorrow. They came in years ago.
You ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion for application 20020160005 SP amended to approve the impact on the waiver fee.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all of the question, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Any opposed? There is one opposed, but the motion passes. Thank you very much. You can take a little comfort, David, in that this was, it was before your service on the council and this process took us a cons, bounce back, bounce back, bounce back from the council until all the counselors were satisfied that.
We were very hesitant.
Look, we've dealt with, I'm not taking, I'm not mad or anything.
No, no, I'm explaining.
It's okay. I don't have enough information to grant this whopping decrease. Just depend what, what the paper's in front of me. You remember, he was here before the board trying to amend the walkway that was going to go by that place and we don't.
I just don't see him getting anything different than the next guy or the next guy until, and we were very hesitant when we came up with the impact fees because it was new to the city and it got hashed out quite a bit, so. If he was asking for something different than the next guy.
And we were kind of thrilled at the time.
I don't know the timeframe since it was asked.
Doesn't matter.
It does, it does.
In my eyes, it doesn't. In your eyes, it does, so.
So, we disagree, that's okay.
That's okay.
That's okay. Moving on, then, we are, the application acceptance for application PL 2016-0004 SU 93-109 Weir's Boulevard, MBL 277-248-7 and 8. It's a boundary line adjustment. Does staff represent that this application is complete and ready to begin our formal process?
Yep.
Given that, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the application.
Motion to accept.
And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. You're looking at, I need to talk about the time of that thing? Well, it's 7:35.
The date of your schedule.
Pardon me?
The date of the public hearing?
Oh.
April 5.
April 5, 2016.
Okay. And schedule the public hearing from, this says March 1st.
Yes, sorry, March 1st.
Okay. So, the public hearing will be held before us on March 1, 2016. Thank you. Under new business, just a couple of comments I'd like to make here first is the, you should all take, if you have an opportunity, you should go see these places. They came before us, we worked on them, stretched over the years. But the Congregational Church has completed their project of a community walkway between the municipal parking lot and Veterans Square and it's beautiful. It came out beautiful. And the, their changes that they made to their building of the elevator to go from their church hall up through their sanctuary up to the new bridge that crosses over is wonderful. I had a, a tour by Reverend Bolton and the changes that they've also made on the Pleasant Street side, their main doors, they took off the big, heavy, dark doors and repositioned them architecturally, but then put in glass. And the changes that they've made there were exactly that they had presented to us and they just come out beautiful. And that connection, the City Council authorizing the change of parking spaces for them, and that makes all the sense in the world. It's improved their safety and it's for the people of Laconia to move from that municipal parking lot into Veterans Square. Beautiful. And they have a couple benches, granite benches out there that the Bank of New Hampshire put in. It's just a beautiful thing. You ought to, you ought to go because so many times we work on just papers and get into all details and it's fun to see things.
I've been there. You can walk right from the back parking lot, right around the front to the main parking lot going down by the Holy Grail.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Came out really nice.
It's beautiful. There are a couple other things for you to go see. The two buildings, the major apartment buildings up on Provincial Road, one being to be used as the dormitory for the Lakes Region Community College. That one from the outside, I didn't get into it, but that one looks finished. And the other one is, appears to be at the point where they're putting siding on the outside. And the road has been paved, the water line's been put in. And just take a drive up there. It will, it will be very good. It will also verify the time that we spent with the applicants and trying to make these projects right. The other one that you, if you're driving around, the new classroom building at the Community College, you can't see it from 106. You need to drive in and around back. It's for their automotive technicians and their marine programs.
That's really neat.
It's a beautiful building. I have not occupied it yet. It doesn't appear that way. But that, it's very, very significant and a tremendous improvement to the campus. And it supports what we need here in the Lakes Region. The other things that they're going to do once they occupy that building is the space that they had used, they're going to bring the culinary program back from Shaker Village and reoccupy, redesign the current space, all of which are, are very good things for That's, that's about on the new business. Old business, discussion of the back language for the wetlands and water quality ordinance, 235. That, the Conservation Commission has asked that we postpone that again. So, we will postpone that. There are no current applications and it's, it's far better for us to hash this thing There are no current applications, and it's, uh, it's far better for us to hash this thing out completely entirely before anything happens with it. Planning Department report, Shannon?
Yep, um, just a few projects to update on. Warren, update you on the Apple Ridge project, which is moving along. They're probably looking for COs for that, the one building that's very close to being done within probably the next month or so, um, and then the second building is probably a month or so behind that, so that'll be coming quickly.
I think I know how old an open house for that building.
Uh, we probably could ask.
It's really neat. The other thing I was asking, Shannon, is to have a tour of the new fire station. We worked on that project, and it would be really neat.
Yeah.
And so if you could ask them, and...
Absolutely, they, they would absolutely love to have you guys through, and that's something I can probably pull together in the next couple weeks, so keep your eye open for an email.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, the other project that has been working right along is the FW Web project behind us. You can see they, um, they're completely framed out, roof on, shingles on. They're also completing a portion of the River Walk as part of that project, and you'll remember, we've got a grant to connect that piece of the River Walk, um, the FW Web piece, to Church Street, so that is in the engineering phase right now. The FW Web River Walk then also connects to the pedestrian bridge, um, so when that's complete, you'll be able to walk from City Hall across the pedestrian bridge, bridge at, um, One Mill Plaza here, um, and then all the way to Church Street along the river. In addition, that grant will pay for River Walk from the edge of the City Hall parking lot, so the River Walk goes from City Hall to the edge of the City Hall parking lot. The grant will pay for it to go, continue across several properties there, including the spa property, and come out on Church Street as well. And so, um, by the time that is fully constructed, we'll have full River Walk along the north end of the Winnebago River up here. That grant is also paying for some sidewalk upgrades to the middle school and to, um, the Woodland Heights School, as well as lighting on a pedestrian path that they have off of Stevens Street. We're hoping to get shovel in the ground this fall on some of the, um, the less intense projects, probably the sidewalks and the lighting, the River Walk probably won't be constructed till 2017, um, but it's fabulous, we got half a million dollars to help us pay for that, so. The other project I wanted to update you on is the Langley Cove Project. This is some, a project that those of you that have been around for a while are very familiar with, those of you that are new, um, will need to come up to speed fairly quickly. This was a project that was originally proposed to the city back in 2005 or so. We actually denied it without prejudice in 2009 or so and asked them to reduce the number of units. It was originally proposed at 340 units. We asked them to reduce it because the land that they're building off of on Weir's Boulevard had steep slopes, um, wetlands, vernal pool, ledge, um, so they did come back in 2011 with a reduced, uh, number of units at 2000, uh, 290. We have been reviewing that plan since 200, uh, since 2011. It includes third-party reviews on engineering, on traffic, on the fire and sprinkler system because of the water pressure, it includes 2,000 linear feet of, um, replacement pipe on Weir's Boulevard. It's a very large project. They are completing their review with the Technical Review Committee, and most likely will be before you, uh, either in April or in May. Again, it's a very large project, so I recommend that if you, um, need to come see me to get updated or review plans, um, it would be wonderful to do that. Either Brandy and I are happy to sit down with you and kind of review, um, kind of what we've done in the past, um, because this is not a project where you can just start off, um, kind of cold, because we've been dealing with it, um, for nearly a decade, so.
What's their phasing gonna be?
Um, they will have six phases. Um, I probably shouldn't go into any more detail than that. What I can say is that, um, the, the city rule, and I think it's a state rule too, is that you can't put any more than 50 units within a development without having a second access road. The Pogus Woods is up to 49 units, and so one of the early phases will be a connection from Weir's Boulevard up to the Pogus Woods property.
So that would be phase one?
Uh, I think it is actually phase two, one and two, um, and then that will allow Pogus Woods to continue being built out while they continue to work on...
Is that where that wooden bridge is?
Nope.
There's a wooden bridge.
Yeah, they were gonna put it, and then when they acquired the Pogus Woods, they attempted to...
No, no, no.
They didn't have to put that in.
No, so that, that parcel where the bridge actually, um, oh wait, on the Pogus Woods parcel, that wooden bridge.
I just remember there was a wooden bridge, there was a bridge that they had to put in.
Yes, so Pogus Woods will not have to put that in if they connect to the Langley Cove parcel.
Okay, so the bridge was on Pogus Woods.
That's correct, yep.
But we wisely made them pick up two roads going back to White Oaks Road.
We did, yep.
And, uh, that was part of the deal for the first one.
That's correct.
And for this one.
That's correct.
So they're not gonna do the second access?
I got a lot of static on that, I might add, but...
They're not gonna do the second access?
Sure proved worthwhile.
White Oaks for Pogus Woods, because they're gonna connect...
Correct, to Langley Cove, correct, yep.
You'd be happy to know, David, all this, almost 300 units, and the, what is it, Fotty over there at Pogus Woods?
Uh, it'll be nearly 70, almost 80, I think.
Impact fees apply to all.
No, that's not correct, they do not, because they were all approved before 2011.
Even the Langley Cove?
Um, Langley Cove was submitted before, like, literally a week before the impact fee was approved.
Damn it.
Hang on.
So you'll have to go to work, Dave.
See, yeah, you know?
The other thing I want to...
I don't want this to come back and haunt you, you know?
Other thing I want to update you on is the other grant that we got, the VHB grant. I should say too, the, um, the grant for the River Walk and the sidewalks was awarded to HEB out of North Conway, they're the ones that are working on the engineering for that grant. Um, the watershed grant in the Weir's was awarded to VHB, um, we've been working with them. That grant includes, um, is a follow-up from when we had the bacteria sniffing dogs here. Uh, just a quick background, there are dogs that are trained to actually smell bacteria in water, um, they are absolutely amazing and extremely fast and cost-effective.
But they don't like to be petted.
They do not like to be pet, correct. I think both Dawn and my son learned that. Um, and so this is a follow-up to basically, we have ID'd areas where the bacteria was found, um, and for those of you that are skeptical, we did, um, take hard water samples and get them lab-tested, and in fact, they were high in bacteria. Um, and so this money will pay for what we call BMPs, Best Management Practices, basically water treatment, um, for some of the stormwater systems down there where we had the, the high bacteria. So this will be a long lakeside Ave, both, um, near the pier, behind the boardwalk there, and then down behind the boardwalk on the, um, the park property on the other side. Um, so that's in the engineering stage as well. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions to Shannon? The, uh, under the Lakes Region Planning Commission, uh, there is, um, quite a bit in the newspapers now about the, uh, progression of the 10-year transportation plan that's required under state law, and, uh, I just wanted to help, um, people understand that the 10-year plan actually begins right here, and that, uh, it is a responsibility of the Lakes Region Planning Commission to put together the recommendations for the 30 community area, the Lakes Region Planning Community Area, and Shannon is on the, a full-voting member of the Transportation Advisory, uh, Council, and, uh, their representatives from all 30 communities get together and, uh, develop a plan for the region as to what we want, um, the state to include in the 10-year transportation plan. There are constraints, and we were told ahead of time as to how much money could be devoted to these projects, but, uh, that's the process, uh, it's, it's a very intense one. Uh, the people from the Lakes Region, uh, it, it's really gratifying to see that even though everybody represents their own community, we're all interlinked, and none of us are independent islands by ourselves, and so the transportation system, the road system, and the bridge system is critical. So, that's where it's begun, the more you see, now it's starting to move from the governor and the GASSIC committee, uh, into the legislature, and, uh, this is where it gets interesting, there is more political, uh, trade-offs that occur in that process, but, um, it, it did begin here, and Shannon, uh, represents Laconia very well on that committee. Uh, Conservation Commission?
Yes, and I apologize, one thing I forgot, I wanted to mention the chamber, um, just had their annual meeting and gave a number of awards for construction projects, and Laconia won several of them, I just want to mention those real quick. Laconia Fire Department won, um, as well as the, um, what they call the Downtown Beautification Community Park, which is the Gateway Park. Both of those projects won an award, as well as the Country Coni, Laconia Country Club for its renovations, um, Edward Jones, which moved into, um, Union Square, GC Engineering and Levendy Properties at 633 Main Street and their rehab project, Fratello's Grill and their addition, um, the Holy Grail of the Lakes Region, um, and Laconia Community Area Land Trust, which, uh, won the environmental award for the green features that it, um, includes into most of its projects. So many of those projects we have seen, so I just wanted to let you know that those projects have received awards. Conservation Commission, um, this past month have been working, um, on our presentation. They're also, um, uh, meeting with DES consultants regarding the Blackbrook Study. Um, DES has to approve, uh, the consultant's report to make sure it meets, uh, state rules and regulations regarding the study, so that's been happening. They've been working on the Milfoil Subcommittee, um, the city received Milfoil funds, funds from the state again, and have partnered with OPIG, as well as, um, the Langley Cove, um, grant that was awarded for, um, kind of a, a citywide effort regarding Milfoil on, um, on our water bodies. They continue to meet with property owners to encourage, um, uh, sale of lands for conservation purposes and conservation easements, um, and they have been communicating with Prescott Farm to encourage open space expansion, um, in conjunction with the Langley Cove project.
Did we want to discuss the, uh, membership on the Conservation Commission?
Yes, thank you for reminding me. Um, so the planning board has a liaison to the Conservation Commission, um, it is Bill Cantardo. Um, I know Bill's not here tonight, but we have spoken with him about the fact that he's been the liaison for probably five or six years. Um, we never did put a term limit on it, um, uh, but we were wondering if it, if it, you know, it may be time, um, to, to switch that up. Bill is willing and able to step off, um, and we're hoping that there is a volunteer that may be interested. Basically, the responsibility is attending the Conservation Commission meetings, which are, um, the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, um, participating in their process, um, and then, and then basically bringing the planning board's point of view to their process and bringing their point of view back into our process. So we'd be looking for someone, um, to volunteer to fill that position.
What time do they meet?
I think it's usually early, like 6:00 or 7:00 maybe?
Six, I think it's at 6:00.
But we can get that... 6:00 on Wednesdays.
Would you all think about it and give Shannon a shout? What we were concerned about, uh, Bill was, uh, on three sort of subcommittees, the chair of the CIP Committee, and he's on the Architectural Review Committee, which, um, as part of the process for Langley Cove, has, has met and, uh, providing input into that process prior to it being formally presented here. Again, uh, this board is the sole, uh, final authority on any project like this, and, and every person here, uh, fully participates in that discussion and approval process. But years ago, we created this architectural Subcommittee, and it's comprised of a former member of this board, Peter Stewart, who is a, uh, the premier architect and a longtime Laconia person. I serve on that committee, uh, Bill Cantardo does, and Edwin, uh, just agreed and joined with us for his first, uh, session today. And this one is a, uh, this is a very large project coming down the pike, and so, uh, knowing, we're also trying to involve, uh, the new people on the board, so that it isn't just the, uh, the old senior members that, that do all the heavy lifting. So if you are interested in the conservation, geez, position, just please talk to Shannon. Thank you. Uh, City Council?
Really nothing to report.
Then on to other business. This has, uh, I would like to bring a, uh, issue before the board, it did not make it in time for the, uh, pre-printed approval, but the City Council has, uh, issued a notice of public hearing in that, uh, members of the, uh, of the city have applied to the City Council to acquire property from the city, and, uh, this is, uh, the process that they, that, uh, it goes through is that the City Council first has a public hearing to determine if this property should be con, uh, considered surplus, that's step one. And that's the public hearing that's gonna be taking place on, uh, February 8th, next week. So what I, um, what we just passed around is the, uh, in yellow is, uh, land area off of Davis Place. It, uh, the, the brook coming through there that runs across the paper is the Jewett Brook, and down the left-hand side is the Winnebago River. A few, maybe a year or two ago, uh, where you see the number 21, that Mr. Bean came before us for a, uh, approval, which we granted, to, uh, come close to the river to put a deck on, he's renovating that house completely. Along the Davis Place, in this yellow area, is now a, uh, very large, uh, city-owned, uh, parking lot, level parking lot, light, lit, uh, it is striped, even though the stripes are hard to see, and it was put in as part of the Scott Williams, uh, project when it was done, and that's that large brown thing on your right-hand side. This land is, is all flat, and it, uh, there is a bridge that connects these, the, the yellow on the top, uh, to the other side of the Jewett Brook. It must have been years ago for, it's wide enough for, uh, vehicle travel, and it's, it's part of the history, but it is a, uh, walkable, uh, bridge across there. This land, uh, goes down to the waterfront, the riverfront there, and I said it's all level, there are now paved, uh, a walkway to get down through there, and the city, um, DPW, the rec department, has put some barrels down in there. But it is, uh, a large area down closer to the river that is unimproved, meaning that there's a lot of invasive species and things of that nature there. But on, on seeing this, um, what I have done was put together a, uh, letter, and I'd like to read it before it's passed out, um, asking for, uh, approval by this board so that I can present to the, uh, City Council, uh, representing this board.
Just one question, it's all vacant now, there's no, nothing on it.
Except for that, uh, parking, uh, lot that is on there. And, and I did not count the number of spaces, but it's a considerable, uh, parking lot, well-paved, well-maintained, uh, striped, uh, lit, it's right, and Davis Place is a two-lane road coming right off a busy corner.
It's overflow parking for the Scott and Williams rehab.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see.
So here's the, uh, letter, February 2nd, 2016, Laconia Planning Board at its regular meeting. The Chairman of the Planning Board is authorized and directed to appear at the public hearing noticed for February 8th, 2016, where the City Council of Laconia is considering a request to declare parcels 4126059 and 4266022 as surplus property, Davis Place. As the City of Laconia's Planning Board is in the process of updating the master plan, and that the city has committed major funding to the improvement of the downtown district, uh, Colonial Theater Project is a major example, it is premature to divest a major piece of real estate in the downtown area that could be, support these plans. There are other possible uses for the citizens of Laconia and their guests, which would add to the quality of life and economic development for the city. The two parcels are very level with excellent views of Jewett Brook and the Winnebago River. Currently, there are walkways on the site and a very large, level parking, paved parking lot. This property is potentially a major extension of the River Walk, a park for residents of the area in the city, and a parking lot that could be used as a satellite facility for those parking downtown in a possible park and ride. The surrounding area is heavily residential with many properties being multi-units with small lots. On Davis Place is also the very large residential building at the former Scott Williams property. On the other side of the brook is an aesthetically pleasing apartment building, Bacteria Woods. These city residents would have their neighborhoods improved by the attention to cleaning this property by the city. It is a request of the Planning Board that the, these two properties not be declared surplus at this time, by a vote of the Planning Board on February 2nd, 2016, and included in the legal record of this meeting. Uh, we have a copy here for Roy. In essence, what trying to say is this, uh, this area is in Ward 2, as you well know, Counselor.
It's in my ward.
Your ward? Yes.
You're gonna, when you're done, I've got some things to say, okay?
Okay. Uh, and so what, pardon me?
I'm just, I'm, I'm just sure, not sure which ones we're looking at on this.
It's the yellow.
It's all the yellow?
Yeah.
No, 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 it's not all the yellow.
Well, it's the light yellow.
It's the light yellow.
Light yellow that's got a yellow boundary line.
That part's the light yellow.
But 21 is in it, though.
And that, it's that whole property that...
No, 21 is not in it.
No, 21 is it.
There's, there's pieces that want to be acquired by the abutters.
It's, so this property's got, it's got frontage on...
The river?
Yes, on the river or the...
On the river.
Isn't... Isn't it? And aren't we, haven't we heard very strongly from the community, they want access, water access for Laconia residents?
We have heard that.
They want it to the Big Lake. That's another, that's basically the old right-of-way across the ridge.
Sometimes you gotta go to the Little Lake before you get to the Big Lake.
We have it to the Little Lakes.
The only access would be to the Winnebago River.
Which ties to Opechik, but does not go further because of the dam that's at the port. You can't get from Opechik. You can't swing upstream.
And we already have access to Opechik.
Right.
Yes, we do. Excellent.
Really good access to that.
We have excellent access to Opechik. But what are you doing this for?
So that-
What are you doing this at the last minute and putting together this statement about what we should be do, what the city should be doing with the property? I mean, what's, what's the goal here?
The goal is that this notice just came out in the paper a couple days ago.
Well, let me tell you where the process is at, at the City Council, okay? There have actually been multiple offers for the land over the years. The city rejected one offer from Mr. Bean about two years ago, just when I was coming on the council. Mr. Bean is making a proposal for purchase of a narrow strip of property. Mr. Wiley is making two proposals for the broader strip of property that I don't think you're aware of, but there are actually three proposals. The one that's coming before the City Council at the next time, I objected to and indicated that we shouldn't be doing anything with this until we got a market value evaluation. But this really just sort of mucks up the works. And you want the Planning Board to take an official position with respect to how this property should be used-
Yes, sir.
-without enough information? This, this sort of just like ad hoc, this is a really good piece of property and the city ought to keep, ought to consider using it, may be in fact what we find, what may be the right thing to do. But we don't do it on a last-minute, ad hoc basis. We don't authorize you to go before the Planning Board and give a pitch to sell or not sell the land. What we do is, this land isn't going to go up for sale on, the council's probably not going to authorize this sale at the next meeting. We're going to get an evaluation. We're going to make a determination of what the land can be used for, what it can't be used for. I mean, the piece of property that Mr. Bean is asking to purchase, and Ms. Saunders can tell you, has very limited use because it's wetlands, right? So you can't-
Is that 21?
You can't do anything with it.
No, it's between 21 and his, and the Bean property.
And the issue is, and this-
And it's all, it's all buffer from Jewett Brook.
Is that the white?
It's yellow, it's yellow. It's a piece of the yellow. It's basically this area right here.
That's over there.
Okay.
Warren, you brought 21?
On the other side of.
Is this going to answer this?
The number 21 on this plot?
Yes.
That's his, the house that's being renovated.
That's where we gave him permission to build, to build a porch. He wants to buy a narrow strip of land across the river from the trees in towards the house, which basically serves as a dumping area for shopping carts and other things of, but that's neither here nor there. Mr. Wiley wants to do something specific with either a strip of land down by the river or has made a second offer for the purchase of the entire strip of land. That's what's happening before the council. None of that, I don't think, is going to be declared surplus at the next council meeting because I'm looking to get an evaluation, get some kind of sense of what this property is worth, and get some kind of sense of what the city can do with it. But this is just, with all due respect, this is just premature and with not enough information. We're making decisions about what should be done with Davis, with this land down at Davis Place, based upon hardly any information. So I'm, okay, I said it.
You know, just from my perspective, I think the most important point that's raised is that we're looking, and that, it's not just this parcel, it's also the parcel over by the fire station. The city's looking to declare certain pieces of parcel as surplus in the midst of a master plan update, which doesn't really seem to make a lot of sense. Why not wait? Because the master plan process may come up with a great idea-
I'm not-
-that the City Council, no, 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 I understand. I'm not suggesting that this-
I agree with you.
Okay. So as opposed, as opposed to saying that we think it should be used for X, let's just hold off, not do anything, and consider the proposal after the, after the master plan has been adopted. It could be, the master plan says, eh, it's all surplus, get rid of it.
There's not a-
But it-
Let me be candid, let me be candid. There's not a whole lot of warm and fuzzy feelings about the master plan at this point in time on the council. Now, I think we're all trying to change that and making progress, but to say that we should hold off to the master plan is not going to get you any traction with the City Council. That's just my take on what's going on. And, you know, and to forge off on this-
That's disappointing.
And I-
But there's, as you say, there's no way that anything should be done with it without knowing what the value of it is.
And I've said that. And I opposed putting this, I was the sole dissenting vote to put this on a, on a hearing to declare it a surplus, because we don't know what the values are.
But this hearing could declare it surplus.
There's all kinds of things that can happen. One of the things that could happen is that we get an evaluation of the property to determine what value it has. Because for development rights, the little strip of property that Harry Bean wants to purchase has really no development rights for the city of Laconia at all. And there's always ways to carve out rights of ways and passage and all that stuff in terms of whatever transaction the city enters into. It's the larger piece of property that we don't know what the value is, and it may have value for the future, for the city's planning purposes, but it may not. And we may have actual, I don't know, we're looking into it now, we may have actual, some kind of contractual rights with Scott and Williams or the folks who developed that to maintain the parking lot as an overflow parking lot. We may have an obligation to do that, and we're trying to figure that out, too, in terms of what we're doing, so.
I guess what concerns me is when you read in the paper that the City Council wants to give up a, whatever they want to call it. I envision a small piece of property that's not worth anything to the exact director butter, but I look at this big parcel over here.
That's a different story.
Why the hell would you guys even bring it up?
That's right.
Why would you be the only lone dissenter against it?
It hasn't been, it hasn't come before the-
Well, you have a lone dissenter about whatever you said.
I'm the lone dissenter on the small strip of property that's actually-
I thought you were the lone strip on this one.
No, this had, the large one hasn't come before the, before the council yet. It didn't get, the proposal didn't get to the city manager in time to get it on the agenda for the last City Council meeting.
One of the councilors wants to say this is surplus also? Is that the intent?
No. Nobody's moved to declare this as surplus and do anything with it. It's going to be on the agenda to be considered along with Harry Bean's request to purchase that small strip of land.
I think they're two separate issues.
Yeah, but why wouldn't someone want to put it on the agenda?
The sale of the big settlement isn't even on the, isn't, isn't even a consideration yet. The council has done nothing with that. The only thing the council has done is to declare that narrow strip of property that Harry Bean wants to purchase as surplus. And it doesn't mean that if we, we have to do anything with it. It doesn't mean if, even if we declare it surplus, that we have to sell it. We don't have to do anything with it. We can table it, we can ask for an evaluation, we can ask for an evaluation of the entire, entire piece of property, because Mr. Wiley's request to declare it a surplus will be on the agenda for the next meeting. So that's what's going to happen at the next meeting. There isn't going to be a wholesale sell-off of Davis Place. So this is just premature in terms of our participation. And maybe we have a role at some point, but not now. That's just my thought.
The notice of public hearing, though, does call for the public hearing consisting of 1.67 acres of open green space and an asphalt parking area of approximately 40,000 square feet. So at the public hearing, by a majority vote of the councilors, this parcel-
No, that's wrong.
...could be declared surplus, which is step one.
That's wrong. I don't know what you're reading from.
Yes, it was the public notion, public notion.
That's what's going to be on the agenda.
For my, for next week.
Yes, and the issue will be whether to declare it a surplus. Nobody's going to sell anything. This is how the process works, okay? Wiley's request didn't get on the agenda because he was late for the last council meeting. He makes the request, because of the protocol, we now send that, we now put this, put it on the agenda. The only thing that's declared surplus right now is Harry Bean's one narrow little strip request. Okay? That's the only thing.
So what's that public hearing for?
It's to declare all these parcels as surplus, which is step number one.
That's what's being brought up, but that doesn't mean that that's what's going to happen.
No, but the City Council at a public hearing takes testimony, and the Planning Board is a participant, and we're responsible for the master plan in this area.
I don't see where it hurts.
And for them to know at this time what our feelings are is don't declare it surplus, I think is a very responsible thing to do. And rather they, they are the final determining body for city property, what's bought and sold. It is not us. But we have, in my opinion, we have a responsibility-
A right to input.
A right to input.
David, so just, just so I understand, so if, you said it's premature.
Yeah.
The public hearing, the City Council has the ability and the authority to declare it as surplus, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And they, at that public hearing, they're going to take testimony from the public as to whether or not to declare it surplus?
Yes, and if one of you wants to appear and testify, you can do that. But the idea of authorizing, the idea of authorizing the chairman to take a public stand with respect to the, to the Planning Board at this point in time, I think is premature. Doing it that way is just, if you want to speak, go speak. You want to speak, go speak. We'll listen to you. But, you know, taking a position, and it's, what kind of, like-
I'm missing something.
It doesn't, what kind of, it's like last minute. It's like, you know, let's put, just not even on the agenda. Let's read out this statement and ask for a vote of support. It's just not the way to go about things.
Does it have to be two public hearings?
The notice of public hearing is for a public hearing for, for this land area.
But would they, if, before, wouldn't there have to be two public hearings, or no, just one?
It's, it's noticed as, as one.
In order to sell it, we have to declare it a surplus first. Okay, so once we declare it a surplus, we don't have to sell it, we don't have to do anything.
But you could do that with one public hearing?
Right.
Okay.
Just to declare it a surplus.
We don't want it to be declared surplus.
I don't see where, I don't see where it hurts. I, I don't see what gets on the-
It's, we are, we are the Planning Board, we're responsible for the master plan. This is an important piece of, of land.
Could be.
When you walk it, it's, it's really pretty. And the residential, right across Jewett Brook, it surprised me, I didn't know it was down there, but Victoria Woods is a very large, well-maintained, senior housing facility.
Yes, it is.
And then Scott Williams, the people that live in that building also, only have, on the other side, which we see, is the parking lot. And so I think it is our responsibility to advise the City Council what our thoughts are.
I agree.
And do they need to obey us? No, they don't. It's their decision.
Do we know how much of that parking lot is used by Scott and Williams, or?
They, when I've been out there, there have been several cars in that parking lot. Part of my, and I've presented it several times, as to my personal opinion, is that it should be made into a public, publicized park and ride.
Who, do we have any idea who actually made it into a parking lot and hot-topped it and put the lights in and?
It was part of the process for the approval of the Scott Williams building.
The Scott Williams, it was put in at the time of the building.
I don't know actually who paid for it.
If there were like 20 cars that parked there, or?
Something like that.
Yeah.
But it is, it is city-owned and the city maintains.
I really don't see anything wrong with the express and an opinion.
In fact, and that's why I brought it before you, I don't think that there's anything wrong, and I think it's incumbent upon us to, to advise the City Council what our, what our thoughts are at this time. Can be later on, they, in their analysis, they come back and they say, no, we're going to sell it. But we have done our responsible, exercise our responsibility of saying, please don't.
If there's additional parking-
Is this the senior living unit you were talking about?
No, that's the Wiley, so the senior living. City could access-
This must be here, 68.
Residents could access that property and be able to park there. I think that would be a very good thing.
Well, they can, and this is, the Davis Place is, is two-lane.
It's sort of, it's sort of out of the way.
Yes.
So a lot of people don't know about it.
Oh, I don't think anybody does. Well, I shouldn't say.
Well, I'm just thinking of other buildings that are close that get overwhelmed with parking, like Parks and Rec. They, there's not a lot of parking there, and sometimes there are, Santa's Village, there are other things that go on there where it'd be nice to know that you could park close and walk there, and especially even the high school. To be able to park there and just walk that little bit of distance to the high school, and there, they have next to nothing for parking.
So that, that's why I wrote it, and that's why I'm presenting it to you. As you all know, no matter which officer, can only speak for the Planning Board after a vote of the Planning Board. I was planning on attending this meeting to express my personal opinion, but that's not the action of the Planning Board.
Call the question.
Shanna, from a staff standpoint, what can you do with this thing?
That's what I was-
I can tell you that years ago, there was discussion about a park and a playground on the piece.
Yeah, but, you know, like if someone was to buy it, what could they do? Housing?
Oh, sure, you could put housing. The buildable area is, is small. There's the setback off the Winnebago River, plus the 75 foot off the Winnebago River, plus 75 feet off of Jewett Brook. I don't think there's any, we went back and forth as to whether or not there was actually wetlands on the parcel. I don't think that we know if there are additional wetlands associated with it.
Rough guess, what can you do with it?
It would be a small, it would be a small building. It certainly could be residential or commercial, though. The use is allowed, both uses are allowed in that zone.
So it could be a small condo complex or something like that?
Yep, yep.
Or retail businesses.
Or very small retail, yeah, or maybe office or something. I mean, it's not, there's no visibility, so retail would be tough, but off, possibly off the space.
The parking lot we're talking about, is that number 22?
No, it's not. It's actually-
What is 22?
22 is actually the, probably the old street right-of-way that is associated with that bridge.
Okay.
And it's just leftover property. The parking lot is on Lot 59, which was a Brock's piece of property that was donated to the city, with the understanding that the parking lot would remain for the overflow for Scott and Williams.
So the parking lot is on 59?
It's on 59, correct.
Which is yellow.
Correct.
It's right there.
Could that string be bridged?
There is a bridge across it.
There is?
Yep, so that, I don't know if you can see, there's a green, yep.
David, just, the only reason this is coming up is because someone from Laconia put a request into the City Council, correct?
Harry Bean put in a request.
No, the other one, the bigger one that's coming up.
Wiley, Wiley put in, yeah, he owns that apartment right down at the end of Davis Place on the left.
The one that burnt?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's the one who made, that's why it's coming up for, yes.
That's why, so that's why that request for, for his purposes will come up on the 8th, along with Bean's request to purchase the property, so.
I don't see where there'd be any opposition, I'm sure there is, but I don't know what it is, to the Bean purchase. But the other property, I don't see anything wrong with the board expressing its opinion that it would rather-
That's not coming up on the 8th.
The public notice indicated it is.
You know, I don't know what the public notice is about and what it says or what it says.
You just read it, you just read it, though. From your legal standpoint, what is that public notice right there?
What I know is coming up is Harry Bean's request to purchase that small strip of land and declare that as surplus. Now, what has to be done is it has to be subdivided out in the Lot 59, because that's part of Lot 59, so that has to be subdivided out.
I don't think this is from that. I don't think this is related to that. I think this is related to-
Do they have to declare?
That's correct. And when that becomes ripe, that may be time for the-
That's not in that notice?
Yes, it is, though. It is. Warren- It says right here.
I don't, Warren, I'm telling you what's going on. You don't believe me?
Of course I believe you. But I also know that this is a legal notice of public hearing that is doing something that we, why I'm bringing it before the pub, of the planning board, is not in the interest of the city. And it's our responsibility to tell the city council.
Can I just call the question?
Yes.
I told you what I thought, what I thought it is. I told you what's on the table. You can trust me or not. It's okay.
It isn't trust.
It's not a question of trust, David.
Well, I would like a-
Nothing to do with trust.
No.
I know it doesn't. I'm being a little tongue-in-cheeked on it. It's my style.
This, we first need a motion to authorize me to present this, this letter on behalf of the planning board.
So moved.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, raise the right hand. There's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. All those opposed? Thank you, David. And one opposed, so.
It's not that we don't trust you.
Acting as the chairman, I will present this to the city council at the public hearing.
So I just want to mention, and I didn't want to do this until after you took your vote, that that legal notice also cued the interest of the downtown Tiff group, who is concerned because of the long-term Riverwalk plan. They, too, have written a letter for presentation for the city council meeting on Monday night. So I just wanted to pass that out.
Who's going to present that?
Pat Wood, uh, no, not Pat Wood, Ken Sawyer. And Bree, I believe.